Uh, Dick of all this meeting, the planning commission to order, uh, day twelve. Uh, you would please, um, rise and repeat the pledge with me. Excite the pledges, say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Excellent. Roll call Sue, please.
Commissioner Hedwinder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Holst is absent and Chair Ellis.
Here. Uh, do I have a motion to excuse the co-host?
I'll make that motion.
I can second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. So be it. Okay, approval of the agenda as writ for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Any, uh, support?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of this night's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay. Approval of this, of the pre- uh, let me put my glasses on, there we go. Now I can see what's going on. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting on April fourteen. Do I have, uh, support for this?
Can I make a motion for that?
Uh, do I support?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that, these minutes? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Very good. Okay, at this time, I would like to open it up to any public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda that we have received.
Bambi Brandon, he's our ruling public.
Nothing branded?
No public.
Okay, close that. Public comments? And? Andy, number five, home business, we are talking about the accessory dwelling units.
Yep.
Uh, what, I think last meeting we talked about maybe looking at other townships or cities.
Yes.
Ideas, did you find any?
Yeah, so included in your packets are, uh, some standards from several different communities. Um, with last meeting you gave me, um, kinda some broad, uh, I guess guidelines to kinda start with, so, um, you know, part of the question is, does the city want to, to permit these at all, and if so, what kind of regulations are you, you know, would you be comfortable with, or would you deem appropriate? So with last being, we, we talked about, uh, requiring separate utility hookups, requiring the owner to live on the property either as, either in the main house or in the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, we talked about having some kind of deed restriction that prevents somebody from selling the accessory dwellings separately from the house, so it always, you know, both of them always remain together on the same property. And, uh, we discussed making an accessory dwelling unit a special land use. What we have here, so, kinda starting from, from the last item, which is making it a, a, a special use, there are some benefits to that. Um, a lot of communities prefer them by right, and a bunch of them do think that, that's special land use approach, so. Uh, when we say by right, that means if somebody were to come in, and if I for one, that would be a staff review and approval. There wouldn't be a site plan for the planning commission. We would take a look at the, at the plans of, at, at the location, everything else. If it met whatever frameworks you could set forwards. We as staff, as, as the zoning administrator, basically, we just permit it, like we would permit some, or somebody building any other single house. So the city, whenever a house was constructed, we take a look at the application, look at the staff, look at the building height, floor plan, et cetera. And then if it meets the basic standards of the zoning ordinance, which it usually does, we approve it. Um, if we make it a special land use, we've been through that process a bunch of times here, so there's a public hearing, they're gonna get an application, everybody was a free employee of the company. Is, um, is provided with, uh, a notice of what the application is. Um, they get an opportunity for public comment, and the planning commission has more discretion to accept or not accept that proposal, so you could turn it down potentially. Um, it gives you a, a, a little bit more control, uh, but for the person who is applying to build an ADU, it, it puts another kinda roadblock in their way, or another sort of set of red tape they would have to work through. It's fine if you wanna do that, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that approach, it's just something to think about. Um, you'll see, so, kinda starting on page nine of the packet, so we included some standards from the city of the village Douglas, which is, uh, near Sagatuck, kinda lake shore, it borders Sagatuck to the south. Uh, the city of Grand Haven. Uh, Grand Haven is a special use. Um, we included the city of Ionia, so starting in, uh, this was an amendment that they adopted fairly recently. So starting halfway down, there is an amendment to section, geez, twelve eighty-six point fourteen. And they have a bunch of standards there for accessory dwelling units as well. We also included some from, I think, the city of Niles, which is down, uh, the San Antonio border. Um, and I think there was one more that we also included. So, um, there's four, they followed this similar form where they're, they're identified as a use, they're permitted only in certain zones, either by right or by special use. Then there's a, a set of these performance standards, and a lot of them cover some of the same topics. So there are limitations as to the lot size. There's usually some kind of standard that says, that puts, that puts a cap on the size of the building. So they'll say it can't be more than forty percent of the size of the house, or it can't be more than eighty percent of the size of the house, or something like that. Something that's intended to keep the building accessory, right, that keeps it smaller. It's not just, hey, let's just have two gigantic houses on the same property. One's supposed to be the main house, one is supposed to be the, the accessory unit. So you'll often see, um, standards that talk about limiting the size of the building, with a minimum and a maximum floor area, we'll see. So like in Ionia, for example, not exceeding forty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit, at least four hundred square feet, but not larger than eight fifty. So they have a minimum and a maximum, plus this kind of percentage thing built into it too. They have maximum numbers of bedrooms, um, maximum, you know, the owner occupancy thing. Uh, they prohibit them from being utilized as short-term rentals. A lot of these are, are pretty common standards that we've been seeing. Um, a lot of communities do also require the deed restrictions, so that if you, um, again, if, if, if you build one, you can't sell it separately, you can't try to turn your accessory dwelling into a kind of mania unit or something and sell it out. Uh, somebody else with a, with a separate tax ID, it wouldn't allow that, it wouldn't allow that, and you'd have that recorded deed restriction to that effect. If you ever tore it down, of course, the deed restriction would pass. There are also, I mean, to, to kind of cover the whole, the whole breadth of, because there are a bunch of communities that just don't allow them, and have talked about them, and just don't want to, just don't want them. And so that's, there's nothing inherently wrong with that. One of the reasons why they've become such a popular topic nowadays is, is just due to the cost of housing. People have a kid, they have, uh, aunt and uncle, uh, parents, or whatever, that for some reason can't afford to maintain their property, can't afford to buy a house. They need a cheap option where they can live. I have seen some communities try to limit them to only life members and or immediate family. I don't know that I like that approach, and I'm not sure that it's.
Would be hard to enforce.
Would be hard to enforce, I'm not sure that it's something that I'd be entirely comfortable writing at this point without some, some further research on that. But that is something that a lot of communities have said, like, yeah, if you're parent, okay, but we just don't want you to run it down to.
Then what happens when they pass away?
Well, exactly, so, so in some cases, they would require it to come down at that point. So, some communities, uh, allow them, or don't allow them in manufacturing, right? Some will say, no, you, in some communities, it's, it's fine, mostly in, in townships, they would say it's fine to bring like a trailer on the property, in cities, it's more common for them to say, no, you're not getting that unless you're a park. Otherwise, you have to build a second-story garage, or just a separate steam building on the property. So something like this too, you have to, um, look at lot coverage, a lot of your lots are already kinda nearing your max, the lot coverage requirements, that's gonna prohibit quite a few of them in the city. So, you know, parking, usually, you know, at least one parking spot, is often the case with a number of bedrooms, number of occupants. And again, you can get as detailed, or as, you can be as restrictive, or as relaxed in the regulation as you want, it's, it's, you have the time of flexibility here, there's nothing that mandates that you do it, or you don't do it. But those are, are some of the topics that we pretty regularly see. When we're either writing the standards, or we're researching the standards, or listening to, listening to training on the topic, it comes up quite a bit, so. I think in the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, you, you had kinda decided that you're willing to pursue this, and at least to prepare ordinance. Um, is there anything, you know, that you've read in here that you guys really like, or really dislike? Or, I guess from here, I can kinda turn it over, and I'll just need some direction if I'm gonna draft something from you guys in terms of what you feel is.
I was hoping to have a discussion tonight, uh, things we like and dislike, or really, really like and really don't want. I mean, I didn't even think of someone pulling a trailer out of the parking on the property, that's, I don't think that is best in terms of the city.
No, there should be living in a trailer.
Correct.
You're gonna have to build something, and what they have or they build still has to go with the lot size recommendations.
Yeah, I like the four pictures that we have, right? You can either put a small addition on your home.
Yeah, I'm in the garage attached.
Over the garage, uh, the basement.
Got a key dress, windows.
Yeah, there's some factors that we have.
And then, uh, the upstairs, so.
Rather than having them detached type thing.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I own a lot, or two lots, right? So. I could just build another house.
If you want.
Right.
Well, if I have a, if I have a barn, and it has a loft in it, I would see if I'm making something there.
If it was already there, kind of thing.
It was already, yeah. But I think it should match the house. The water, the utilities.
Mm-hmm. What benefit of the city to have separate utilities, or would that be better or worse?
I don't.
It, what it does is, is, well, for light and power and all of them, um, if, let's say you have a parent living in the accessory dwelling, and they take off the water and Florida rate. The utility bill, um, basically, they're just paying the ready-to serve, right? Until they get back. The water, right now, if you go to any of these, uh, apartments across the street, or up and down our main street, we all are required to put, uh, a separate meter in.
For each water.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not sewer.
No.
No, they're not saying sewer.
Sewer water.
They are, but you wouldn't have to, you know, dig a trench and hook up the, the sewer line, it's just the water service. Which isn't that expensive.
But the, 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 I would, I would, I would dare guess that it's very, very minimal to what the city, it just makes the homeowner, if you're gonna have a family member there, that, that's one thing, but if you're gonna have a tenant, right, they should be paying their own utility.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't they do private meters though, as a tenant, or as a landlord?
Uh, I don't know about that, that would be a big question.
I'll have to check, I don't know.
I've seen that term.
Yeah.
Communities, but.
Yeah, I can check with Rich, and he might be able to shed some money.
I would say whatever language it would be used, if there are people that are gonna be, um, septic and well, that are gonna wanna have an accessory dwelling, so if you have a requirement to hook up to, there might be a location where they can't hook up.
Well, so that's, yeah, and that's one of the things I think you could think about, is that you, you could say, that shall be on water and sewer, public water and sewer period, and just disallow them if they don't have water, so that that could be a limiting factor.
Yeah, couldn't you, if they had a well and a septic, uh, have it all, have like the septic system, just like if you buy a home that has one, right? Have it looked at to make sure that it is.
At what size?
Up to date and as good flow with, right, as in good shape.
Yeah, I mean, you could just require, you know, prior to, to receiving a CVO for inaccessible, just say, you need a letter of approval from the health department.
Right.
Approves.
Saying everything's good.
Yeah, approves your water.
Cause I think then we help, we help, we can look at helping more people that have different options of whether they're well is septic or sewer, city won't.
Do we first have to decide whether it can be rented out? That'll be one of the ones.
Never something before we decide, look at these separate meters and stuff, I mean.
Well, then people are just gonna be trying to build rental properties, I think.
Yeah.
But we also have to be careful, because if you're gonna make it for family only, and you set it yourself, and five, three to five years, the family member passes away, then that.
That's how I got my Cadillac house, and now I got a half of the garage, two-starter, one family owns this, and the other one owns the other half.
Right. I guess what I'm saying, like first have to determine, let's, let's, who's gonna live there?
Uh, yeah, it's a hard thing to do there, yeah.
So.
We got another dwelling with all the utilities, and now they're all dead, by half a story.
Is it for the growth of the city, or for family comfort? I mean, our, our objective is to grow the city. To get people to come in.
We're picturing it as adding to the diversity of housing.
But if it's, if someone's gonna open a business, rental business, then I would think they'd have to come through us, I would think more so than they.
And, yeah, well, I think by, by the very nature, they're going to be, there's gonna be a rental or rental-ish. Even if it's a family member, right?
Yeah, it's already.
You know, if, if my kid decides to move back home after he goes to college, and he wants to live in an accessory building on my house, like, it'd be on charge of rent. And if I do, how is that different from having just some other random person that I know, not related to me, in the same house, doing the same thing, paying the same amount of rent?
But the exchange of money doesn't affect the name of the use necessarily.
But would it be a, the owner of the property has to live on one of them?
That, that's a key thing that does change.
Owner of the property.
Like I said, the owner of the property has to be there, living residence. Maybe that'll limit the business aspect of.
Whoever the owner might be, has to be there.
Yeah, it's gotta be their primary residence.
Yeah.
Are we all agreed on that?
Yeah.
It's okay to whoever rents it, or, I guess that's.
Well, I look at it this way, you, like Andy said, again, if it's a family member, if I'm gonna allocate money to put an accessory dwelling up, I'm gonna charge my kids rent, right?
Right.
Um, they live for free for long enough.
Yeah.
And it's just, I mean, I, I think that's just the nature, so.
Even if you rent a room out in your house, without it, maybe you might charge somewhere, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I just think the family member in one of the houses has to own it.
Yep.
Own it all that we have.
I don't think it's our decision to say they have to rent it, or to, money, money is the exchange, but, yeah, we, I don't think it's a decision factor, whether we say that you can or can't rent it, I think it's independent.
It's their little building.
Yeah, but the homeowner, you can, whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, the separate utilities, I think is a good idea.
Yeah.
Size-wise. What, I briefly looked at some of the percentages, um, often said, is it eighty percent of the gross footage it could be up to?
I, I think it depends, so like in, um, in Ionia, it says, shall not exceed forty percent of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit, and must be between four hundred and eight hundred and fifty square feet.
See, I like that.
Yeah, two.
Um.
Yeah.
In.
Not to exceed or.
Here's your max.
Yeah.
Here's your min.
Grand Haven has it from a minimum of four hundred and a maximum of a thousand. And not exceed, uh, the maximum lot coverage for a given zoning district. And the floor area cannot be greater than the size of the principal dwelling. So one of the things that, um, I like about this one, that I think is a little bit relevant to you, is that some of the houses in the city aren't that big. So if you have a twelve hundred square foot house, and they say you can't be more than forty percent of that, then you're already down to four hundred and eighty square feet is your max, which is pretty small. So, because you, because, I don't have the exact numbers, but because a lot of the houses aren't, aren't that big in terms of their footprint, you know, forty percent, I think would be a, a, a bit restrictive. I do like something like Grand Haven's approach, where they give you, you know, not, not larger than the house, or maybe you could even say not larger than eighty percent of the house. But then also give a window where it's like four hundred to a thousand, so you're accommodating, if someone has an eight thousand square foot house, and you're not, you know, accidentally permitting a, you know, seventy-five hundred square foot accessory dwelling, you know, uh, or something crazy like that.
There's a lot of properties that were, it's just not gonna be possible, but, but between lot coverage and percentage.
Yes. Lot coverage footprint, what, what is our, is it, what, what is our footprint that we actually allow it?
I don't remember off the top, is it forty percent, thirty-five or forty percent, I don't wanna say?
We have to state that you can't exceed that as well, and that's the limitation.
Yeah, so.
Max on square footage and things.
Yeah, and, and we've had some, some residents that have pumped up a dent at times, when they're trying to expand, they're trying to build a new accessory building, they're trying to build in, in addition out of the house. Because lot coverage counts just buildings, but it's all buildings, so it's, they have a shed that's a hundred fifty thirty, that counts, if they're detached garage, that counts, the house, and then detached garage obviously counts. A patio doesn't, and a deck doesn't, and a driveway doesn't.
There's a limit to how many sheds you can add too, isn't there, buildings on there?
Yeah, so there, there's a limit on the number, so all that stuff is, is still going to come into play. So some people might have to decide, like, well, do we wanna get rid of one of these accessory buildings, or do I wanna tear this down and replace it? ADUs on the second story, something like that.
If they already have a tall building, and they go dorm or lock in it, that wouldn't increase that footprint.
Correct, it wouldn't increase the lot coverage in that case. So, uh, I'm sorry, so you're, so it's thirty percent lot coverage in R two, which is most of your applied city lots, sixty-six point one thirty-two.
So what kind of square footage, do you wanna limit, uh, state? Just go with, uh, the average of what the other cities are going? I mean, it seems most of them are four hundred, uh, eight hundred or a thousand, that doesn't seem too big, but.
I'd like to stay.
Four and eight?
Yeah.
Four and eight.
Yeah. Because you, you look at these mini homes they're building now, right, they're four hundred square feet, and they're absolutely gorgeous.
Oh, yeah.
So it can be done really, really nicely.
Less to clean.
Yeah.
No, it, it, seven, eight hundred square feet can be in a one-bedroom apartment, or a studio apartment, is in that range typically.
Yep.
If you're in a two-bedroom, then you're like eleven hundred or something, probably, but that's really kind of what this is intended to probably be.
Do we need to throw a percentage of the main dwelling in that as well? Like, it, the math will lose me, but is there a situation where they could, the public could play for, skirt around four hundred, eight hundred, I mean, it's hard to skirt around four hundred, eight hundred, it's gotta be in the, the ranges, but.
Yeah, so I think there's, there's two things there, I mean, if it's between four and eight hundred, I, so the risk would be if somebody has a seven hundred square foot house, and they want to build an eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling. I mean, that's really gonna be the only problem that you run into, or if they have a eight hundred square foot house that's one-story, they want to have their accessory dwelling unit, you have house with your rocks, you have kind of a two-story L building, with the one-story house, or some communities that say, nope, we don't want these taller than the main building. Again, they're trying to keep them lower and more accessory now.
Can we already build, it's saying we can't build a little building taller than.
Big existing dwelling?
Yeah.
We have some bigger, right?
Or that is.
I don't.
Even out here, that are bigger than the house, taller than the house.
Taller than. I remember I, I built my barn, I, I was sure to make sure it was below my house, I thought I was telling you where it's.
Wasn't it Riverside, didn't they allow that accessory building, that new garage, be the same height as his house, right?
Same way, that would, that would have a problem with it, taller. Thinking about a trailer park, having something on, you can't have trailers or main home, and have an accessory dwelling for that, I mean, this is. No trailers.
Well, yeah, I think, do you have, outside of the, your couple of manufactured housing communities, do you have any manufactured or, you know, trailer-type homes that are not in a park?
Yeah, I remember Zino's, I know all of the ones by, uh, Banker and.
Pleasantly, yeah.
He hires.
Yeah.
And their lots are so small, I don't know how they would.
Well, those wouldn't work, cause those are ma- so like, those are managed, they lease the, the space.
They don't own the property anyways.
Okay.
So those are kind of an issue, but it's, there are, in some cities, there are, you know, people that have had a manufactured home on a lot that they own. Just like they've been sitting there, and they've been living there for, you know, thirty or forty years or something, I don't, I can't, there's any, there's no. There used to be one down on the river, might still be.
I think he rebuilt.
Yeah, there are maybe a couple on the, on East Main Street, on Banker, that was about it.
A manufactured home, they have to define it with a fear, because you can get manufactured homes that come, pretty manufactured, come with kits that are pretty stationary.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, so they are, they are defined it, and you're given the ordinance, so when we say manufactured, we mean that it's, it's transportable, you can pick it up and, not like a modular unit where it comes in pieces, but once you build it.
You can't.
Since you've done it, it's not going anywhere.
Right.
So, yeah, there is a little bit of that distinction.
I just have one quick question, do we limit short-term rentals already, of, of the city?
Uh, so they are permitted as a special use only in a couple different districts, like SR.
So that would be another consideration to.
Yeah, a lot of communities just have no, just no short-term running of an ADU period. Wish we could do that.
And one thing I don't want is to do this, have somebody build these, and then suddenly they're on Airbnb.
Yeah, I say no short-term.
Right.
How do we, uh?
You can say, or you can say that.
What do we word that?
It's not allowed to be a short-term rental.
Yeah, they just say, no, no accessory dwelling unit shall be utilized for office as a short-term rental. Just, cause we define short-term rentals as a level of less than thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that, you put in there?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
That's good. A little, a little on this thing, yeah?
A little bit, I think.
So the idea of a deed restriction, requiring a deed restriction.
I think that's a good idea.
Going to do that?
Yeah.
Do you want to have them be a special land use, or a permitted by right staff review?
I don't think they need to come before us every time, I mean, that's.
Could you try it that way for a year, I mean, and then ease off of it? I mean, I don't know what the volume would look like.
I think you might get a couple, or another, another people who are interested.
I don't think we're gonna get a hundred applications.
Let me ask you this, is it, is it easier for staff just to make the, to look at them and go through them, or to have, because it's a quicker process, right?
It's a quicker process.
And instead of waiting a month and then having to pay, right, for us to look at, I think we need to look at. And instead of waiting a month and then having to pay, right, for us to look at, I think we need to look at not long, you know.
Other than.
Not having to do that.
Well, we are intent, I mean, the R A is gonna be inspected by the city, or the, the planning, it's building inspector, you're correct. Absolutely. So we would just be looking for, is there parking?
Right, recording. Yeah, so I mean, the benefit of the special use to me is that if you want, if you're concerned about the impact on, on the neighborhood, then this gives the neighbors an opportunity to voice any concerns and then you can address them. Cause that really gets the public very much. Otherwise, you're a hundred percent correct. It's more expensive to go through that process for the person applying. You gotta review it, you gotta look at a application and have a meeting, it takes longer. You have some discretion to say no to them, but at the same time, if they do it and it meets the standards that we're talking about here, you're gonna have a hard time saying no. And so it's one of those situations too, where if you're always just saying yes every time, like, what's the point of the public hearing? You're always going to approve these things, so just, you know, then you say, well, get it to staff and let's that for it.
Could we say that if it is outside of our parameters, you would have to come before us?
Yeah, so if there's something that we're, that we're concerned about, maybe it's, so hypothetically, we would say, if it's, we say between four hundred and eight hundred square feet. If you have more than eight hundred square feet, you gotta come before the planning commission. You know, something like that, that if there's something that concerns you about the impact, it's too tall, it's too big, it's too whatever, that you could trigger or trip to the planning commission for a special use permit. Or just for a site plan approval or something, and make it more concrete that way.
I like that. Gives, gives people a way out if they have a design idea or. They're totally withheld in these bounds of building restrictions.
Yeah, they need to report with the station if they have too much problem.
Right, does anyone go outside?
Then they gotta come talk to us.
Or open. Any problems with that? So we, uh, no trailers, right? No wall. We got our size.
What about height?
Is there anything taller, ready? There's nothing?
Nope, so for an accessory building right now, there is not a, a limitation on height other than the same limitation for the planning, you know, so right now you can have a one-story house. That's, you know, fifteen feet tall, whatever, and you can have accessory building that's thirty feet tall. Not, not many people do that right now, but it is, it is technically allowable. And we allow whole barns, tile construction, as long as they side it.
What about just putting it in there as like Dave just said, no, no taller than the current home?
Yep, but.
Cause if you got a two-story.
This is, are they putting that on, or are they?
I think they're just converting that over.
So like for, I, I think that's fine. You will basically eliminate the option of a second-story garage for anyone who has a one-story house. That's, otherwise I think that's fine. And it's not a problem.
So you're saying no taller than the existing building?
I agree.
At this mark, I like you better.
What happened there? Yeah, cause if you're already living in a two-story house and you wanna add a second story at the top of your garage or whatever, whatever, right? It looks.
Balanced.
Yes.
They're gonna add a second story as, so the garage, they can do that to the house.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, if you're gonna put a story in your house.
You're in the garage?
Spend that much on.
Yeah, you gotta do that, to your house.
But it can't be, no, cause we already said it can't be more than four to eight hundred square feet.
That just can't addition to your house first.
And then there'd be the accessory dwelling.
They added it. Stage it.
We'll have to work in on this one.
I think that's few and far between.
Yeah.
So.
And so you guys are thinking.
If they want to put a second story on their house, would that fall under just regular building addition, or?
Cause it's not accessory building.
Yeah, so if it adds on with their house, we look at it, we make sure that it meets the, you know, height requirements and everything else, but if it does, it's just.
Their house.
Yeah, it's just another, there's daddy, it's no different from having it on the side of your house.
Then after they're done with the house, then they can add a second story to the garage.
Yep. Good. Utilities we got, right? And it doesn't include a fresh sewer line. Someone was having a discussion, they're like, you're gonna make everything hook up to the main sewer? I don't think that's, that's a cost. They have to hook up to the existing sewer of the house, right? I guess it's up to you guys.
So they get built by the water, so they can just tie into existing sewer, I would think.
Yeah, cause you don't want.
You don't wanna tie.
You don't want a new tap-in fee and.
That's what I'm referring to. They don't need to tap in.
They can hit the yard where it goes through, tee into that somewhere. And you already got the separate water, that's what they're gonna get built for.
And you want to. I'm assuming that gate would be separate from.
And the health department, it's septic?
Yep. So a lot of septic would require health department approval.
How many septic's we got left in town?
Um, I mean, more than you.
More than they say on the end.
West Mead, Rindell and.
Yep, Rindell and Fun and all that, and then over like, yeah, the dry and all that, there's. And I mean, for the city where we're at now, it's all obviously. There's some, and there, and those could, I could easily see some blowing up on those properties that have a little bit more of their, like, bigger setup on.
Estimates existing dwelling.
Yep.
And have parking, right?
Yep, so typically, we'll, we'll see like at least one off-street parking spot.
So would it be like for the apartments where it's one point five parking spots per, per unit, right?
Yeah, so we would just say one, so like right now for, if someone just builds a regular, single-family home, we have to have two off-street spaces, either in the garage or the driveway. If you add an E D U, then you'd have to make sure you have one for third.
Anything else that? I mean, if you're gonna put all this up, we'll discuss it.
Yep, so I have matching the house in, in, in neighborhood in terms of design and architecture. Owner must live on site, that's either in the A D U or in the main building. Minimum area of four hundred square feet, maximum of eight hundred square feet. If they want larger than that, then they have to come to the planning commission for special use. At least one additional off-street parking space in addition to any other required parking for the house. No short-term rentals of the A D U, the deed restriction would be required, no trailers or manufactured mobile homes. Can't be taller than the existing house on the property. Then we will allow them to tap in the sewer lateral surface of the house, so they don't have to go to the main and tap the, we'll offer well in septic and pipe it up by the county department. And I can check with Rich on this specifically.
The special land use should be a, it's a little item. If you have any outside of these parameters, you need to give it as a special land use, not just a square footage.
Okay.
Or you, I mean, if you limit that special land use only to the square footage. I mean, I would say anything out of these, I don't know, eight, are there eight?
Nine.
Nine things. It's anything out of any of them, you should, it's more of a special land use versus just implementing that square footage.
Is there anything on this list that you would just never want them to, to ask for ever?
Trailer?
So, so, so we, we might wanna, and I'll, I'll think about this as we write it up, but it, so if they're, like, I, I don't see necessarily that you would ever wanna give on the deed restriction. Or the trailer, or, you know, short-term rentals, or maybe it's all like the matching architectural styles. You know, somebody comes in and says, well, you know what it says, it has to look like a house, but I wanna build a.
Same color.
Yeah.
Or the same color.
So I, so I, I might break these into two sections. One are like the, kind of, these are the hard standards that we're not gonna vary. And you can have a separate section that would say, you can modify these with special names.
Any other ideas about this? Do we have anything?
No.
Deed, deed, uh, this is the right.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm sure see how you're answered about.
And no short-term rental?
I think you're.
Yep.
Yep.
I think, well, it's next level two.
But it'll be good because it gives you a month thing, by everything we just went through, and any bringing of a rope draft that we can all go through and.
Get an apartment, okay.
Yep.
This is something we're gonna decide right now.
No. We'll take it up then.
You, you need, do you have everything you need?
Yeah, this is, yep, we'll draft it in then for the next meeting and we can make changes, then it'll have like a schedule for public hearing in July for eventual recommendation to city council.
Anything else on this accessory dwelling? Okay, new business? I don't think we have any new business.
We have any.
We have A, new business, A, new business. Uh, staff report. Sue?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Uh, Amy?
Uh, we will have an application for the next meeting for you. For, um, the, uh, gentleman, Mr. Wheeler, that's your last month for the multi-dominant project on Bowdrow, I guess. We do have that application, yeah, so that'll be coming to you next month.
Anything, um, from building?
Uh, they're gonna be getting started pretty soon. They're very close, Mike and I.
And the U N E D area, is that?
Um, haven't heard from them in a bit. We worked with them on some upgrades to their parking lot that they completed last fall. Um, haven't heard from them this weekend. Not sure what plan others are working on that.
The river has been sprayed, you said?
Yeah.
It's sprayed. See how it goes. Okay, uh, commissioner remarks?
I'm good.
Mike, you're good?
I'm good.
Alan?
Okay.
Marty, still living?
Yeah, so at city council, we took the master plan along with rules of procedure. Uh, we're taking, we put that out for the public to go ahead and peruse both of them. I forget her name that you sent.
Malia?
Malia, yeah. Said that, uh, minor changes are good, wholesale changes are not gonna do, we decided that as a board, but, um, it's good for the public to see. Makes them, you know, because we've been working on this for a long time, they may have spotted something that, it doesn't hurt to have a lot of eyes on them.
Okay. Anything else? And I don't have anything. So, uh, a motion for a German?
Quick motion. I'll support that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say aye. I show this motion, and this, this meeting is adjourned.